Any other questions? Mr. Davis, you've been pretty quiet over here.
My concern, I'd like to hear from some of the other people too, but my concern is this the gateway to the river bottoms. You know, I liked your concept when you brought it in the first time with the R-112 type factor and bringing it in that way. And I know, I can see your concerns with a little higher density to help with, you know, your property buying somewhere else, but it's still something that people want to protect in that side river bottoms. We have talked in city council for the eight years that I was in there, bringing people in and out and in and out to try to get open spaces and have, you know, R-112s and maybe a little high density in there. I liked the concept of how legacy farms did theirs up there where they, all the property owners got together and worked together so some of them could have high density and some of them could have the medium density and stuff like that, so that worked out. That's how that worked out there, and I can almost see the river bottoms doing the same type of issue. So everybody reaps from the rewards of a higher density in some areas, but the open spaces and medium densities in the other. Like I said, you are the gateway coming into...
Yeah. What do you think of the senior living for the whole thing?
I like that concept very much, but that again is sort of a medium type of density there. That other concept that you had with the high density, I don't know what Mikel's are talking about. I haven't even heard that.
Oh, you haven't heard that?
Well, the way I heard it, you know, a month ago, we were talking, you know, R-112 type of factors and that type of deal. You know, this is just a, this, we're just talking right now, and I know you guys are in a hurry, but I like, again, I would like to hear from the other people that are getting annexed into this area and hear their concepts too, because that's impacting their properties too.
Yes, it is. I know.
Like I said, that's how I feel, you know, that's how, you know, for the last...
Oh, I totally get it.
And gee, I grew up here too, you know?
I know.
And I know how beautiful the river bottoms has truly happened. Eventually, it's going to get opened up. I seen East Bench and seen how beautiful that was, you know, and we talked about open spaces up there, but once the can was opened, you know, and it's a beauti, it's a beautiful, all those homes are beautiful up there, don't get me wrong, but, you know, they're all the same. They're all the same lots, they're all the same factors, and that was it. And that could happen again to the river bottoms, and all of a sudden, the open space details and everything are going to be gone.
I agree.
So we have to protect, we have to look at this a little different, and we, like I said, we've been looking it up, I don't know how many years, but in my eight years that I was on the city council, you know, we looked at it four or five times on how to develop it. You're the gateway. You're the gateway, and so, once you, once we do whatever you want, then everybody else is going to want to try to follow suit, and that's what we've got to look at a little bit and be a little careful here.
Yeah.
And, and, like I said, we've got other property owners here too.
Yes.
We've got consumers.
Yeah, we, yeah, we need to hear from them. Well, like I said, okay, when we, well, when we first came and looked at the city map, it showed that our property was medium density. That was one of the reasons that we decided that we could buy it, because it showed it as medium density. Another thing about the other owners, I, if we were not being forced to sell this property, we'd just leave it a farm. We just would, because I totally agree with you. We, we grew up there with it as a farm, but that isn't the way our parents stipulated in their will that was going to happen. It had to be, everybody had to get their share, and no, but not one person could come up with, you know, $2 million to buy it. So anyway, what we talked about last time too, Richard, about leaving the whole hill in agriculture, is that still a possibility? I mean...
Up here?
Yeah.
Well, absolutely. In fact, a lot of these people want to stay agricultural.
Right, and I'm, I totally get that. I'm totally fine with that.
But one day, they might come to us and say, "Okay, we want a zone change, and we want to be zoned whatever."
Okay. So as it goes east, will it become low density automatically from next to high density? Does it automatically do that, or...
It's, that's the, yeah, exactly what the general plan shows. So right now, the brown is, is that low density? I can never remember the color designations. So, so everything on the, on the bench, coming down the hill to River Bottoms Road, and then to that line between the yellow, that's low density. The yellow is medium density, and then the green is agricultural, so...
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate you.
I do have a couple of questions for Mr. Anderson, and that might help the people here. What are their op, what, so, next step? That's the question I want to ask first. What is the next step for these, for these folks, as well as those that are interested in making sure that they, their voice is heard?
As was discussed, there are a couple of issues still that we're working on as staff. Mostly, it is about streets, just trying to figure out exactly how to best approach the idea of annexing these 100 acres, given the condition of some of the, the streets that are there. How might those streets provide adequate access to a development like what we're looking at here of this 30 or so acres? And trying to determine exactly what, in our view as staff, is appropriate to suggest that the applicants be required to do when the property's annexed. So we're finishing up an annexation feasibility study that I would guess that we will have done in the next couple of weeks. And the idea is that, and I'll go ahead and say this with the idea that we might not make this, but that the annexation would be back on your agenda for your February meeting, for you to potentially take action on it that night. So that's assuming that we get some things ironed out as staff. It'd be helpful as part of that discussion if we do get some feedback tonight on just exactly what's been talked about in terms of what's appropriate to plan for, in terms of just a residential concept for the proposed development. And, for example, should you make a recommendation in February on the proposed annexation with or without any kind of zoning that would support development, we would anticipate that that would either go to the city council, and there would be a public hearing in the city council meeting either the third week of February or the first week in March. So that kind of hinges on how much we can get done in the next couple of weeks, but this could be potentially on the city council's agenda, again, in a public hearing with them as early as the third week in February or that first week in March by one of those two.
Now, logistically, we held a public hearing last meeting. We don't have to. I would lean to say that we would. I would, I would open it up as a public hearing to get, you know, I, I think it needs to be massaged some more so that we have a more definitive answer on that particular proposal, and then give the public a chance to then provide us the feedback, as Richard has suggested, which I think is a wise suggestion, so. I mean, at this point, my leanings would be to say, you know, if we annex this, annex it, that we zone the properties that are being proposed for development, and then leave everything else agricultural at this point. I don't know how everybody else feels about that, but go ahead.
Can I ask a question? Um, so are we looking at right here, the general plan? Is this what this is? Okay, and so, someone, somewhere down the path before us, proposed high density and medium density housing there already?
Correct.
I don't really care who specifically did that. What I care more about is what was already said about, you know, that's kind of the doorway to the river bottoms. What was the thinking when they, whoever proposed this as the general plan? What were their thoughts about that as far as, and not that you would know the answer to that. I'm just maybe throwing out a, I'm just throwing out a concept here.
Got a few fingerprints on it.
People obviously must have thought this through and came to the conclusion that maybe that road or something was a dividing line or something between agricultural and where development should happen, and why high density and moderate to low was the right thing. I mean, I don't feel like what has been proposed is out of line with whoever said this was the general plan that we should follow. And perhaps we want to rethink that, but, I mean, I don't know if that's normal procedure to all of a sudden just change the general plan.
Well, and can I offer just a couple of thoughts?
And I'm just, I'm actually asking questions I don't really understand, so...
Well, Tracy, you do understand really well, and I'm happy to maybe just clarify a little bit, but the concept here is really no different than it might be any place where we're talking about. A corridor that has some commercial potential, which we think Main Street, south into the community, really does. We've talked with a few different retailers over the years about the idea of, of having some sizable retail establishments constructed around the Volunteer Drive-Main Street intersection. With that being said, there are some real challenges to developing properties, given their configuration, existing land use, historical land use, and different things like that for some of the properties that are adjacent to Main Street. But this plan really is based on the idea that someday, there will be really busy retail development here, adjacent to Main Street. It might be a little bit off in terms of the depth of that, but at least for the part of these properties that runs onto Main Street, we expect there to be retail activity, and again, we aren't just entirely going on a hunch as we continue to plan for that. And just like we might do any place in the community, we don't want to encourage at least the development of a real stark transition as we go from retail development to low-density residential development, let's just say, for example. So we might try to create a pattern that has, you know, if they're at a large part of the community, it's professional office uses, and mixed use or something that might allow for some professional office and some multifamily kinds of development to help create that transition from retail development to some kind of residential development. In this case, in this part of the community, we felt that if properties didn't have some kind of direct visibility from Main Street, and if they were subject to the kind of access limitations like this area has, they'd never be able to support anything but residential uses as that transition. Somebody's not necessarily going to go into this area here, for example, maybe to build a big medical office complex or something like that, some kind of other professional office development. So instead of assigning these properties here mixed use on the general plan, we focused on using some kind of higher-density residential to, to make that transition a little bit more appropriate. And who's to say this could be anything from today, 12 to 18 units to the acre? And a 12-unit-to-the-acre project can look very different from an 18-unit-to-the-acre project. And the thing that in my mind really you might wrestle with relative to this area here, our general plan for medium-density residential allows for a range of three and a half to eight units to the acre, which likewise is a really broad range, and development that's done at three and a half units to the acre is going to, in some ways, at least look and feel different than development at eight units to the acre. And that, in fact, is where I think, you know, the city council will have the latitude now, without changing the general plan to, to come up with what you think is appropriate for this location, you know, all things taken into consideration. The range that we provide in the general plan, you know, that's not provided to make your lives more difficult or to make applicants guess and that sort of a thing. It's really done with the idea that, like I said, you're given latitude to look at things in the particular context that they set in, you know, maybe accounting for everything from access limitations to maybe development limitations, like the inability to construct dwellings with basements and to just weigh everything, and it may be account for design considerations and that sort of a thing as well, and, and offer your recommendation as to what makes sense in terms of that density. So, there's a few thoughts that I have. I don't know if that answers...
No, that's...
...your questions, but...
Actually, it answered several other questions that I was going to ask. I just, in regards to what Richard has mentioned, I mean, I think he's spot on when he says, you know, "This is the first, and the floodgates are going to open," because we already know that there are people right there ready to devour this whole area as soon as we open the door, as soon as we open that gate, and you, you know, this property just happens to be the first one, and so it's hard because we're going to be picky and be kind of like, "Well, is this what we really want?" Because what happens next is going to follow suit, and I just appreciate the, you guys for taking the time, and I wasn't here last time, so I don't know what was said, but I've never seen a group come in and do all this kind of presentations to give us the concepts of what they're thinking. Obviously, you care a great deal as well, that this is the gateway to a beautiful area, and so hopefully, we're all on the same page, that time should be taken and doing it right, so...
Just one more thought about the river bottoms. We talk about that a lot, we have for a lot of years, as has been mentioned several times tonight. I've been my 11th year here with Spanish Fork City from day one. I've met with people that have interest in developing what, what we would consider the river bottoms to be, and, yeah, I think for good reason probably, it makes some sense to look at this like river bottoms property. However, we are looking at it distinctly from the rest of the river bottoms, at least is how I would put it. So, like, we can see if maybe, Corey, you can pan out a little bit from this image. And this goes back to discussions that we had with planning commissions and city councils years and years ago, but for a variety of different reasons, we consciously decided to look at the land that's north of South Lane differently from the rest of the river bottoms, and that's kind of how we've planned it as well. Everything else is general plan agricultural. It would take a general plan amendment to do any kind of large-scale development in, again, I'll just say, the rest of the river bottoms. We'd have to see some significant upgrades made to utilities and different things like that to accommodate development in the rest of the river bottoms. And I, I guess, a fairly strong feeling about timing and what's appropriate for the river bottoms. Honestly, I don't think that 2017 is the right time to develop the river bottoms. You may see development proposals still in 2017, but right now, the general plan for the river bottoms is agricultural uses. One unit per 40 acres, which frankly, isn't going to make any kind of residential development economically viable now. So even though I completely concur with the idea that as Volunteer Drive is extended to the east and comes through, the area that is being discussed as potentially being annexed, I think that's true, and I really hadn't thought about this as kind of being a gateway to the river bottoms. But even though I think that, that's a very fair way to put it, and it's something that should be considered as we talk about potential development and annexation, I hope that this project isn't viewed in any kind of an automatic way as being a gateway to developing more of the river bottoms. In my view, it certainly doesn't need to be, and shouldn't necessarily be unless that's what you and the city council want to see happen.
Just a thought on the Volunteer Drive. What, what is the main reason you'd come up into here versus, say, the more natural road that's already there?
That's a great question. There will be a four-way intersection where there's the signal here.
Okay.
So that's, that's, we, we know this is point A, so to speak.
Yep.
And, you know, point B could maybe be any place along here, so getting from A to B, there are lots of different ways to do that. We, as the city, we love retail development, and I think our biggest concern is making sure that as this road comes through this area that we think can be developed...
Gives you more frontage and opportunity.
Exactly. It gives us the, the best configuration for future pad sites and that type of thing.
Yep.
And that's why I would guess it'll probably come something like, just due east from that intersection across, like Mrs. Bradford suggested, you know, maybe into a roundabout here and then to the south.
Yeah. And, you know, when you talked about medical offices or office-type structures maybe not wanting to be in that area because of the lack of the main street frontage, that Volunteer Drive could give them that access...
That's true.
...to where it could open that up and, and, you know, might be supporting, supporting businesses for the rodeo grounds, you know, in a, in a business...
Place for veterinary office.
There you go. Or whatever, but, no, that makes sense on that Volunteer Drive.
Roundabout too, just for perspective, I think the plan would be, that shoots off and connects up to River Bottoms Road too, but...
Roundabout in this area or something, you mean?
Where Volunteer Drive comes across and then turns to the south, that transition.
Also, I think the plan, what was talked about, meaning veterinary exists, let's have, let's make sure that's a connection to get to River Bottoms Road to help alleviate some of the problems that that road has right now.
Dave, one other question I have for you. So, is it, would it be a master plan development? What, help me remind myself of, I feel a little rusty, even though I've done this for five years.
I wouldn't have to be, but everything we've seen so far would be.
Okay. And with that, does that allow us to say that an average density has to be met? Does that make sense? I mean, you know, instead of a range, or instead of saying, that gives, I, I'm looking at it from a land planning perspective to say, "Okay, get a, someone that's a good land planner that can make," you know, we say, "We're comfortable with this average density," then they can say, "Well, as I showed, the, the low density in one corner and the, the senior housing density in one other corner," and maybe they can get a little bit of higher density if they can average that out to make it pencil for them. I just, that's, my thought process is out loud of, like I said, getting a really good land planner, a lot of times they're landscape architects, but, you know, someone that can really, that looks beyond just the nuts and bolts of how a subdivision goes together, could really benefit the, the development, I think, so...
Make eight units to the acre seem like five, maybe, or something like that.
Right.
I mean, really, it...
Dean, what were you going to say?
It was written out, and we're just trying to get an overall feel before we go through...
Sure. Before you pay us to do your, do your design work, so. I'm not, I'm not advocating that at all. I'm not, I'm an architect, not a land planner, so...
Or he's not my first choice.
Hey, Dave, I'd like to say something.
And maybe just relative to the average density, to kind of put that into perspective. In master plan developments, that's exactly what we do. In fact, the next item on your agenda, next couple, I think, are master plan developments in different zoning districts. So, for example, should all of the subject property be zoned R-112, then the applicants would have an opportunity to simply develop to a density of 2.7, I think it is, units per acre. If it was zoned R-19, our next mo, our next zone in terms of density as you increase, it'd be 3.6 units per acre and so forth. You could do a combination of different zoning districts and different things like that. But in a master plan development, that's really all that we would focus on is, okay, you've got 36 acres, you can do, you know, 3.6 units per acre, we do the math, and we're not looking at lot size and that type of thing, or even maybe housing type. So anyway, that's just a follow-up thought.
Richard?
It's a hard calling for six people to do, especially a city council and staff. You know, as we, as, as Dave said, through the years, this council and the, and the planning commission has got together with staff and sat down and planned out a master development in the city, and through the years, we changed it. You know, we changed this as developments do come in. We've looked at this area many, many, many times and, and, you know, and made a concept of what we wanted in these areas, and so we tried to follow that the best we possibly can. Unfortunately, we have to look at everybody. I, I just can't look at you guys. I've got to look at these people too, and these people that down here, and, and I, and I have to keep that concept, we have to keep that concept in our mind, you know? I mean, I'd love to say, "Okay, do whatever you want. It's your ground. It's your ground. Do whatever you want." But what impact is it going to have on the other person? Or, you know, I mean, I would love to change laws and ordinances throughout our city to accommodate everybody, but then it affects and, and impacts somebody else, and so then they're mad at us, you know, because we've made that choice and that, and that, and that development. And so then, here we are changing it again to try to please those people. And so the bottom line is, and I hope you people understand this, that we're trying to do the very best we can to make you guys happy, but also make these people happy. It's your ground, and, and we want you to try to develop it the best we can. It's, it's your inheritance, but you've got to also understand that there's a lot of other people involved in this, in this impact too. And so, as a commission, we're, we're trying to do that, you know, and as a city council, they're trying to do it. As staff, they are trying to do it, and we're trying to do the best we possibly can. So anyway, we'll listen to everybody and then flip the coin and see what goes on, but yeah.
So, Dave, go ahead, sir.
It's very important to us, this, this river, this river bottom area. It truly is. And, and like I said, you guys are the gateway to it, and, and what happens here, you know, might just happen. So anyway, that's my comment. Thank you.
Dave, in terms of feedback between now, I mean, if we want to hold a public hearing, you've got to notice it, what, today? Yesterday? I, you guys, I don't know what the timeframe is for our next meeting, and so, I mean, we want to make sure we can do that and have a public hearing.
So, you've, you've satisfied the requirement that you have for a public hearing for this?
Right.
At any point in time, you can accept public comment.
Okay, okay.
So we no longer, as far as the planning commission's concerned, have any of those kind of...
Okay, great. And in terms of getting feedback between now and then, if, you know, because I, there may be somebody in the audience or on that's watching that, that may not be able to come, what's the best way for them to communicate their thoughts or feelings towards this particular proposal and what we've been talking about tonight?
We appreciate people giving us their comments in writing somehow, so we can deliver them directly to you without needing to...
Give them your email address or mine, or...
My email's fine. Anderson with an O. That's probably the best way. Certainly, it's the easiest for me than to pass those along to you and just to get them, we could keep those as part of the record of the discussion. Or they're welcome to call our office, 804-4580, anytime, but if somebody calls, we'll, we'll hear them out and then probably ask that they give us their comments in writing as well, so. But, yeah, that's, that's certainly fine.
Thank you. Any other final? Brad, you've been quiet.
Yeah.
So, thank you. We appreciate everyone that's been here. Look forward to maybe seeing you in two weeks or three weeks, whatever. What is the date again, Dave?
I admit to check. I think it's, I think it's not the first, is it?
Yep, February 1st, so two weeks from tonight.
Not quick.
So, okay. Our next item on the agenda then is the Anthem Park subdivision. Mr. Anderson, again.
We'll be talking about an 11-acre site that the Nebo School District has owned for a lot of years. They purchased it, as I understand it, just so that they have the opportunity if they, they needed to build a school on the property. And to make a long story short, for the past several months, we've been talking with school district employees about the prospect of them maybe obtaining a site someplace else in this part of the community that they would anticipate using for, as I understand it, either a junior high or an elementary school site, depending on exactly what their need might be, and I think they're maybe making some changes in terms of junior highs and middle schools and that sort of a thing, so...
Valuing it, yeah.
Anything but in the know or an expert on exactly what they're planning on doing, but to make a long story short, I do understand that they're looking to dispose of this property, and with that, they've been working with a particular developer, and we've received a zone change application and preliminary plat approval application, and that's what's on your agenda tonight. So the proposal, from a zoning perspective, would involve changing the zoning from rural residential to R-19, which would then allow for the development of a master plan development with 39 lots. And in essence, the average lot size in the master plan development would be 9,000 square feet. So, I don't want to make this any more complicated than it needs to be from my perspective. R-19 zoning is very easy to support, given the type of development pattern that we have to the south and the zoning that we have kind of to the south and to the east. I think R-19 zoning is very compatible. The Ivory Homes development that you approved last year, that's zoned R-19, and frankly, that's really all, I guess, that I have to say on, on zoning. I think that's, that's an easy one, and with R-19 zoning in place, approving a master plan development that meets our, our standards for the R-19 zone likewise, becomes pretty easy to, to support. So, the Development Review Committee has recommended that both the proposed, proposed zone change and preliminary plat be approved. I'll just note a couple of other things. I'll just note a couple of other things. We have a trail right now that runs through Fieldstones Development in the south, down to our River Trail, runs right up through a corridor here. With this development, the applicant would be setting aside 20 feet so that trail could be continued up to First South. We would then anticipate that when the property to the east of it develops, they dedicate an additional 10 feet of land so that we'd be able to match that cross-section. The trail coming through Fieldstones Development has a, has a 30-foot wide corridor. Right now, the access to the project would come just from 300 South here. This intersection here really necessitates that any additional access on First South comes further east than this property's boundary. So, we're going to have to wait until this property develops to be able to make a connection through that development back into First South in order to meet UDOT's spacing requirements for intersections out onto First South. But that being said, with 39 lots, as we talked about earlier with another project, we allow up to 50 on a single access, and we don't have any concerns with the development as proposed.
The lot sizes comparatively to the R112 that's adjacent, I mean, just visually, they look similar.
They're actually a lot bigger, so. So, for example, these lots in here, they're in the 6,000-square-foot range.
Okay.
You have a few that get a little bit bigger, like in the 7,000-square-foot range.
Okay.
Whereas these, again, the average is going to be nine.
So, they're bigger than, that's good. That makes me feel more comfortable.
The R112 and the R19 in that respect, I think, is a little misleading. And if you pan out, you can see why, Corey, with this project being a master plan development, again, just like we talked about, well, really, two things happened. Back in the good old days, for developers, they could get bonus density, and that's what they did here. So, that has something to do with why the lot sizes are smaller, but so is this area here that was part of this other project or bigger project where there's that space that was dedicated to the city, and the density was consolidated in the neighborhood to the north. So, they're got a little bit smaller lots.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Dave before he steps away? Sorry.
Good old days, huh?
The good old days.
Wasn't that long ago, right?
Is the developer here?
I remember when Fieldstones in here and you were talking about their bonus density.
Uh, well, just maybe just a little bit history. I think we're fit into the area, you know, same, the same size at least as Ivory, and then the rest were bigger than. What happened with this is, actually, the school approached me, the district approached me, they, our other piece we're doing, that career piece in the Leland area, they want to be in, they need to, they want to plan for the future there. This site is too close to the, the elementary school. So, they cannot get that approved for another school. They need, when they, they had this property before they built the other one. So, they, they need to trade that out. They want to plan for the future. So, part of that career piece on 1700 that the Revere Health is on that same road, that part of that will be a school site in the future.
I think it's right here, right, Dean? That color doesn't show up well, but.
Which would be, spreads it out enough, and that could be, that's big, that one will be big enough to maybe do even a junior high. This was more set up for a, for an elementary originally. So, it worked out. Good for them, it's good for us. If you have any questions, let me know.
Thanks, Dean. This is a public hearing, so entertain a motion to move into public hearing.
So moved.
Have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Does anybody here would like to make a comment about this proposed development? You'll state your name for the record. Thank you. Appreciate you being here.
Aaron Bryan. I, can I see the pointer?
It's right on there.
Oh, there it is. Awesome. So, I live right, this is 1280, so right in here. And one of the main concerns that I have about this single access right, point right here, granted, you know, the developer, you know, 100 South is a moot point. The main concern that I have probably with, along with the 200 other homes already existing, is this stretch of road right here. There's a farm there, there's an irrigation ditch, and it literally drops off to one lane. So, cars that park here on either side of this right here, adding another 40 to 80 cars coming and going from this main point, that road is going to become even more dangerous and more difficult. That's my only concern, main concern about that is, is it's literally, there's a concrete piece right there, and then there's the warning signs on the side, and then it opens up super wide down here. But right there has, in the almost 10 years we've been here,
Bottleneck.
It has been just a sheer drop-off and very, I don't know. I, again, it's one of those, whether, you know, the city looks at putting the ditch under the road, or, you know, again, that's development, and that's my two cents.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bryan. Appreciate it. Anybody else?
Does Corey have any insight? Go ahead.
My name is Janessa Warner. We live right there. My concern is this road being connected right here with access to First South is going to make our street extra busy. So, I'm just wondering if this is going to connect or not, because the road that we usually use, Spanish Fields Drive, is extremely busy. And I would prefer our street to not be come like that one. My kids like to play on the, you know, ride their bikes and scooters, and, and that's my concern. I'm also concerned about where these homes are going to go to school. Are they all going to funnel into Riverview? Riverview right now is already packed. So, that's another concern that I have. So, thank you.
Thank you. Your kids are troopers. Anybody else? Anybody else? Please.
I'm R.C. Parker. I live across the street from the Bryans and on 1280. And I'm just, I, the thing I love most about Spanish Fork is the trail. And so, you mentioned about how they're going to leave 20 feet on that side, but why not develop it while they're developing that property at the same time? I know that there's a lot of missing pieces to the trail. I think it's supposed to eventually go connect behind the, or I guess you could say above the police station where the trail already is. It's supposed to arc like that, correct?
Follows this path, doesn't it, Corey?
Right. And so, if they're already going to develop one side, why not develop the trail while they're doing that? I know that they've waited, and they typically are waiting for developments in order to finish the trail. So, I guess it's more of a question. I was wondering if the city would, or whoever builds the trail, if they would address that during the time being. And I also have the same concerns as the previous two people as well. And mostly also the school situation, because I was told when we bought the house that that was going to be an elementary school eventually. And I thought, which would be good, because Riverview is getting really, really crowded. And what you guys mentioned over here would be a junior high, and I just don't know what's going to happen if we add more people here. And then also south of the river, there's more houses going in there. I just don't know what's going to happen to Riverview where my kids go to school.
Great, thank you. Let me just address the school question real quick, because that's not something that unfortunately we have within our control. So, I would encourage you to go to the school board meeting and express that and say, you know, that's, that's your right as a citizen and, you know, to do that. So, just like you are here tonight, so. So, I apologize that that's not something that we can really address. So, you want to come forward? Come on.
My name is Emily Gillingwater. Could you pan out a little bit further on the map? I am over in the older part of Spanish Fields subdivision, right around there. A lot of our neighbors are concerned about, the only access in and out for this whole portion of the subdivision is Spanish Fields Drive. We would prefer that this area here be developed first so that we know for sure that 100 South will have an access point right there. One of our fears is that if this portion of the subdivision is approved, that that access point does not get approved. We've been in our home for 10 years, so obviously, all of this traffic here filtering out on Spanish Fields Drives does make for a lot of traffic. It also has, where Spanish Fields Drive comes down over to, sorry, I'm a little lost right here, but where they have to, right over here, sorry. There's a lot of traffic that gets to that point so that they can go over to Riverview and ALA. If you go to that intersection during school time, everybody who's taking their kids all comes down through here. It's basically like a speed raceway on Spanish Fields Drive. So, that's one of our concerns, is if we can address this portion of the property first so that we can know that there'll be a guaranteed 100 South access, which I know we can, because there's no telling what this guy's going to do with his property. So, that's one of our concerns, is let's address this property and that access point before we move over to that.
Okay, thank you. I think that covers everybody that's left here. That corner, any, any comments you got recovered?
I have a question, but I don't think you guys can answer it. It's all right, you may just speak.
Yeah, he's pretty smart.
I'm going to turn to Corey here in a minute, because he's going to have.
We can answer anything.
Jen, you live in this neighborhood, don't you?
I live pretty close to here, yeah. I know all these folks. We live over this way.
I live on 1280 West as well. My name is Kendra Hicken.
Sorry, what was your last name?
Hicken, yeah. And like I said, I don't think you guys can even answer this. But like, timing of this and everything, if it was approved, how long does it usually take for?
The guy right behind you.
It's this guy.
They're going to move out before it happens.
Or maybe she wants to move in.
I'm right on the corner.
Okay, okay.
Typically, developments, to get lots, it'll maybe three months or four months.
Within the year, probably you'd be done with this if it all just gets put.
Oh, really?
Yeah, within 12 to 18 months of life, it'd be built out.
Oh, okay, that's faster than I thought. That's it.
Great.
And I do agree with, I'm sorry, I can't remember your name, the man who was mentioning that.
Aaron Bryan, right there.
Bottlenecks into that little area, you know, right there. So, that would be my, my concern as well.
Great, thank you. Police, still open. Yep. They, they like it for the TV folks, so, so you can be heard.
I'm just curious. You guys were talking about this little brown area dedicated, open space. We were also told when we bought the house that that was going to be a park eventually. Is that a park as in open space or a park? Because everyone, a dog park? Oh. All of us that moved in thought it was going to be a playground eventually, but we've been here almost 10 years, and.
Seems like I saw something on your retreat documents about there. Is that correct?
Talking about urban forests.
Yeah.
All I can do is speculate.
We're, we're good at that, Dave. We've been talking about restaurants for, Texas Roadhouse forever. That's how we speculate around here.
I'd rather speculate on park development. There's a great plan that's been put together for that space and how it could be developed. I don't know if anybody's seen that. We had that plan put together four or five or maybe more years ago. And really, it's just a matter of, right now, as much as anything, how quickly development activity happens in the city. Because every time we issue a building permit for a house, we receive impact fees, and that's what we then use to build more park space with. But our Parks Director did talk to the City Council this past weekend in an annual meeting that we have about several different things. And proceeding with the development of that property is one thing that he brought up. So, at this point in time, I would doubt that that would happen at all in 2017. But if we budgeted money in the, what would be the 2018 budget, I think it's very realistic that you could see development happen there in 2018 in that calendar year. And if any of you have strong feelings about that, I'd suggest that you let City Council members know. I think that's input that they really appreciate. So, that's, that's about all I guess I have.
So, can we talk about access points then? I mean, I think the point of, of, you commented in your, in your presentation that there would be a point of access on 4, 100 North, excuse me. Is that, no, South, excuse me. And, oh, thank you. We are still in public hearing, so, thank you. I'll make a, anybody want to make a motion to move out of public hearing then? I think so, yeah.
I'll make a motion that we move out of public hearing.
Thank you. I'll have a second. Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Richard. Okay, now let's answer some questions, hopefully. See you now, I'm all flustered. Thanks a lot.
I'll ask the question. So, I mean, that does seem like a lot of homes on one arterial road. And I'm sure that that wasn't intentionally planned that way. So, what is the real plan? Because, I mean, there is really only one arterial road in there.
Does that even meet what the development requirements would be right now?
Yes, is my answer. And if we're talking access, Corey, I'll probably tag team and hopefully.
So, how many access into this many lots are you saying we've got right now?
Right now, we have three, as I see it. You could maybe even say four with, you know, West Park Drive and First. And let me, let me start maybe though by saying that I completely agree and am sympathetic with any concerns anybody might have about access into this area being limited today. This isn't really what we aim for and wouldn't aim for this with that many homes. I didn't count them and can't remember exactly, but I think we might be approaching something like 400 homes in this area. And absolutely, we would anticipate that there would be more access provided to that. And I can see how that will happen in time. I know that doesn't make people's lives any easier today. But this property right here, which I think is, is owned by one property owner, that's a significant obstacle to having additional points of access, for example, over to Volunteer Drive, going to the east.
Really got three points potentially here, here, here.
Right, with the plan is there, but that doesn't do anybody any good today, yeah. Obviously, another point of access here will help. But in my mind, even that doesn't really change the, the travel pattern for people a whole lot. If you had another access there, it's more getting access to the east over here that probably will help disperse traffic. And I guess I've come increasingly to believe that it's really, really important that, you know, almost like with what we have in the old grid system part of the community, that that's the ideal way to design a residential street network where you're dispersing the traffic out so much through a neighborhood that just as was described tonight, you don't have particular streets that, you know, typically, they're, they're designed very similarly to every other street in the neighborhood, and maybe identically in terms of how wide they are and things like that. But just given where they're located, they do become the quote-unquote thoroughfare, or, you know, that route that everything funnels to as opposed to, you know, having everything dispersed more equally throughout a development. That's a practice that we work pretty hard today to avoid creating. So, that, you know, that being said, I know I don't have an answer that is very useful for anybody right now, but I think long-term.
Is there, is there something, Corey, on the transportation master plan that we can implement? I mean, I don't know how that process works to, you know, to ensure that that connection point gets made to First North?
No, as far as this connection, it's, it's just a local road plan, so it wouldn't be on the, a collector or anything on our master transportation plan. I think the, the control there is as the property develops, we make sure those points happen.
A Victor Vano's property?
Now, we can't go to the property owner and say it's time to develop, or we can't tell a neighbor they can't develop until their neighbor does, but.
Okay.
Spanish trails and.
And at this point, you know, I totally understand that location there.
Sure.
And, and it's the same story. We've heard for years of, you know, we don't do any, we can't do anything with it until it develops. That being said, go ahead.
The main drive-through here, and if you look at Volunteer Drive where they're building the townhomes there and across from the park, and you see the sea of asphalt there, that, that almost looks ridiculous today. Eventually, that's going to be a main thoroughfare. You'll see that width continue on up through to the north to Center Street. see that width continue on up through to the north to Center Street. And then the anticipation is, you know, long term, an interchange in this area that's on UDOT's and MAG's long-term plans. So, the idea would be this main trunk line up through and down Center Street to attract people there. We, it may note, as Ivory's developing here, we made a conscious effort looking at, should this master planned road connecting between First South and Center Street be located lined up with Spanish Fork Parkway? Should it be over where it is today? And looking at traffic models and volumes, the feeling if we lined it up, it would just make Spanish Fields Drive that much of a collector. And it was built as a local with homes fronting. The offset there was put in on purpose to help try to disperse traffic and not make it a direct thoroughfare that we have speeding problems and things like that.
That was going to be my question then about this point of access here. Is there any reason why that can't be the point of access? I mean, it's kind of that traffic calming concept.
It's a matter of lining up with the roads.
Is it a half, I mean, I understand. Well, I think it's stupid then.
Offsets are good.
Yeah, I mean, that's...
Configuration of the...
Is one way to put it.
Oh, because it's so...
But skewed intersections create conflicts that lead to accidents.
So, you're saying, so you're saying that these two roads are too close to each other?
To have a street that...
Well, a street would have to line up straight across from it.
Yeah.
You couldn't say bring this road straight down and intersect in between those two and have a safe road network. Now, one lining up here could potentially work. Here, I think you'd be in the backyards. That just doesn't line up well.
Right.
Yep. We are talking about our new street cross section through this project, right?
Yeah.
Again, this is not likely going to help make anybody feel a lot better, but...
See, so on my way over here, on that part of Third South.
Here.
Right there, I had to pull over on the side of the road because there's a car parked in front of me. I mean, it's not, if there's cars parked on the road, it's the small, that is the smallest road. If you see in the yellow, I mean, you lose a whole lane right there.
Are cars parking on the north side of the street?
No, they can't. There's a ditch. It's like a ten-foot drop off.
Okay. So, cars are just parking on the south side.
Two cars can't go past it.
Is that an irrigation ditch right there?
Yes.
Correct. It go like that?
Yep.
It's piped through there.
It's piped from that point on.
It's piped through here.
It's really narrow. I don't even know if that road...
It is.
It's the city standard for the width, right?
Through the school district property, it's piped. So...
But there is an open ditch.
It's an open ditch, sir.
Here.
That whole thing is open. That's open right there. And when you get to here, nope, it's an open ditch. And when you get to here, it converts over to a twenty...
It's a thirty-six or twenty-four inch pipe.
We've got to actually relocate it because it goes through the middle of those lots.
Right.
We're going to bend it, but it's...
The ditch is there is likely the ditch servicing the property. But, but the...
He's not watered from it. So, yeah, it could be a...
Yeah, they probably have a turnout for a local ditch for this property that will go away.
But it's in that section of Third South, it just drops a whole lane.
It, it is. If you haven't driven that, it's scary.
One car parked on the road, you can't have two cars pass it.
So, what can be done about that at this point?
My thought is, we talked to other people that work. I mean, it's a kind of a public safety issue.
I think today it would be parking restrictions until the road could be widened.
Right. So, I'm wondering about red curbing maybe, which people that live right there might not appreciate. But those are the things that we'd look into.
I wonder where it's owned by a developer. I mean, can we, can Dean approach that developer and do a, I can't remember what the terminology is off the top of my head, but, you know, where he builds it. And then when that guy actually builds it, he reimburses whomever. Is that makes, whatever that term process is called?
Connection agreement.
Connection agreement. Thank you.
Or cactus agreement.
I knew there was a process there. But is that, is that even a feasibility?
He knows that property owner quite well. Probably be happy to reach out and try to...
Yeah.
Occasionally, that property owner's hard to work with, yeah.
Corey, shrink that, will you? Back down a little bit.
He just likes to hold on. He likes to hold on to the...
Sorry, I couldn't hear you, Richard.
Seems like he likes to hold on to his properties.
In or out? So, we can look at the other side of First South.
Okay.
So, is there...
The church is on the other side.
Not that much. I'm sorry. Do you want to see the grains of sand? End up First South? Yeah. So, our intention would be probably lining up with the access to the church, I think, is what UDOT would require. The problem with an access in the property we're discussing tonight is not only the intersection with there, but the railroad. There's spacing required with the railroad as well as just general spacing.
So, they have to get down further.
So, I think the best case, or the best place would be to line up with the access to the new church that has been built, which is somewhere in, you might get one more lot and then an access out.
The other question that was asked was about the width of the parkway and...
Well, and on that, the trail would be built with this project.
So, basically, the additional ten feet becomes landscaping.
Making it a, yeah, a little wider corridor would be added later.
Additional...
Yeah.
So, Nebo, when Ivory's building their homes, are they going to build a section of the trail as well?
Yeah. So, the LDS church...
Zoom out again.
I'll zoom back out.
This is kind of a neat part of this property, I think, the trail and how close we're getting to a really big loop.
Because we're also doing the new collector road cross, which has a, along here, you'll know, you probably know, along the wall, there's just sidewalk, small sidewalk right against the wall. There's not the big newer wider asphalt.
Trail cross section.
Trail cross section with the, with the park strip and everything. So, it'll go to their new one that's an extra trail system.
Yeah.